Amy, are you doing the part of it?
I am.
Okay.
Yes, Jim. Brooke will be landscaping and all.
Okay, alright.
How do you guys do all this?
Ah, yes. The judge has that to set his books on, or his, on his-
Notes?
Notes, mhm. Yes. But I moved it, I, you know. Good to go?
Yes.
Okay. Folks, let's come back together here after lunch. Had a little bit, ran over just a little bit on lunch, but that seems to happen more frequently here. But anyway, we'll go ahead and get started. Jim's got one announcement from Peewee Valley that he would like to make before we get started with our other business.
Sure, thanks. Just so I don't forget this, Mayor Bob Rogers has invited everybody to, Peewee Valley has a Yule Log Celebration Sunday, December 3rd at 5:30 to 7:30 on Town Square. That's this weekend coming up. They have a bonfire, chili and hot dogs, live Christmas caroling, and a visit from Santa Claus, and the businesses are open. Bob, Mayor Rogers, has been on the Study Review Committee, comes to just about every one of our meetings, so anybody that wants to go down there, it's a, I've been down there before, they have a big bonfire. It's amazing they don't set the town on fire, but, yeah. 5:30 to 7:30 this Sunday on the Town Square.
Alright, thank you. The other business that we have to need to look at this afternoon is some zoning ordinances updates, and the SRC Committee has been working diligently on those for quite some time. So I guess we'll start out with our Division 300 landscape regulations, and Ms. Feman, I think you're up to bat here.
Okay. I trust everybody's read most of this, or tried, anyway. We started out with, staff started out with the task of trying to reorganize the landscape regulations that made them easier to read and understand by both landscape architects who actually create the landscape plans, but also the public, so they understood how they were protected by buffering requirements and things of that nature. So really, we had to go through and reread everything, remove things that, honestly, I'm the one that reviews the landscape regulations, Jim does sometimes, and Amy does sometimes, but I've, the past two years, I've been doing that. So a lot of this has come from experience of reviewing them and seeing what works and what doesn't, but also with meeting with a couple of landscape architects early on in the process. So removing things that really didn't apply, or things that were just reiterated several times, and then reorganizing into as many tables as possible and less words. There still are a lot of words, but we tried to at least put the requirements in a table format. So that's the major change. The other major change is instead of, for our planting requirements, which are on page six, changing the planting requirements from a zoning-based planting to a land-use-based planting. So instead of like C3, there was a chart that had, you know, if something's zone C3 and there's a development that's C2, that told you what a, that you had to have a low opacity or high opacity or medium opacity buffer, which no one really knows what that is, it's kind of up to whoever's reviewing the plan at the time. So we changed that to determining, you know, what the land use is at the property, because sometimes there's a tract that's zone commercial, but there's actually residential units in that tract. So under the old landscape regulations, technically, they would still have to install, if they're abutting residential property, what the commercial zoning landscape requirements are, even though it's a residential land use. So we switched that around, and we think that's going to work better for more tract-tailored landscape regulations. We also added a species mix, which was not previously talked about in the regulations. One of the suggestions we got from Ann Richard, who is with LD&amp;D, a landscape architect with LD&amp;D, who we work with a lot, was that a species mix should be incorporated in our regulations, and that's to allow for more biodiversity and less of a chance of blight, you know, if a disease comes in and attacks one type of tree, then majority of those trees are going to be removed. So based on the number of trees required, there's a number, a different number of species required. So that's, that's a major change. We did add tree installation and planting standards, which we did have, but we consolidated those into a table and reiterated how much of a green with or a verge space would be needed, and that's on page three. Sorry, I'm skipping around here. There's a lot of changes, I just kind of want to hit the highlights and let you ask questions. We still have vehicular use area planting requirements. Those have not changed, other than some of the heights have gotten taller. If it's, you know, closer, you know, within 30 feet, we did increase the height of anything that's adjacent to a residential use. And then we did, on some of them, change the minimum number of trees per linear feet. But that was based off of looking at many different landscaping plans that were submitted and seeing what works when you actually go out and look at the site and see what's installed. Scott, as you all know, may have, may know, had some comments on the landscaping regulations, so we did try to incorporate some of his comments. Those are mostly related to the green infrastructure portion that has been added. And basically, what we added there was, we're in order to, we're trying to promote some green infrastructure, especially with lots that have high impervious surface. So in order to promote that, we did allow for tree wells or rain gardens, things of that nature, to be implemented into the project, and some of the other landscape regulations could be waived if they do, do do that. But Scott, as the county engineer, would have to review and make sure that that meets the stormwater requirements. And that was incorporated into the landscape regulations. We did remove, per his comments, that basically a distance from, that trees would be clo, you know, planted close to any permanent roadway or sidewalk, because there are so many different situations where there may be a utility line, or maybe the road is maintained differently. We just felt that, and Scott felt that it would be better to leave that up to the county engineer to review on a site-by-site basis. So that's all I'll cover. I didn't want to do a formal presentation, it would be a lot, didn't want to overwhelm you, so I'm really here just more for questions if you have them.
Before I let Jim speak here, I want to just fill everybody in, or give you just a little update on, especially for the new commissioners and the folks that are probably watching on community TV. The SRC Committee, Study Review Committee, meets once a month, usually on Thursday night, next door here on the, in the conference rooms, and it's made up of five members of the Planning Commission, myself, Mary Ann Smith, Nina Crosby, Jan Horton, Bob Klingenfus, and then Jim always attends, and then both staff, Amy and Brooke-
Mayor Dybel.
And Mayor Dybel, and usually Mayor Rogers is there, and then all the community's invited. A lot of times, we have developers there, we'll have, you know, a lot of community interest there, whatever. So, you know, we've vetted all of these, all of this information has gone through a pretty extensive process, you know, through the Study Review Committee, and then, you know, we make a recommendations from the committee to the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission then, you know, will vote on it and send it to the legislative bodies, which would be fiscal court, and then the three cities that make up the combined planning unit. So that's the process that we're doing today on these, you know, the landscape regulations, school capacity, and subdivision consideration, that's what we're looking at today, and what we, you know, we'll make a recommendation hopefully today and send it on and into the legislative bodies. So Mr. Urban, do you have anything you need to add?
Well, I was gonna, you did a great job of explaining the background on this. The only other thing I was going to add is that there's a approved and prohibited tree species plant list. Paul Capiello, who many of you know is the director of Udell Gardens, we asked him to review our landscape, our tree and plant list, and he was already on a committee in Louisville and said, "Well, once we get it developed, we'll just let you have it." So that's what this is. For the region, these plants work, and then there are prohibited trees based on either they're disease-prone, or they're invasive, or cause some problems either with leaves or berries dropping, whatever it might be. So I thought it was very helpful that Paul was willing to share with us what the work that Louisville did.
It's also great because they're, they're classified by size, and what's best for a street tree, what's best for like a deciduous buffering tree, so that's made the review of landscape regulations and the tree species a lot better for staff and for proposals. I also want to add, one more section was, that was added, was code enforcement and fines. We have a lot of questions, I'm sure that you all have seen, about how do we enforce these regulations and keeping these trees planted and pruned and maintained. Before, we didn't really have a section that talked about how to enforce that and what fines could be levied if they don't comply. So now we've added this section that basically just states that if they don't comply, they have a certain amount of time to comply, if things are not added correctly, that we can take them to the Code Enforcement Board, and fines can be levied until it's remediated.
Okay.
That's it.
Alright, and folks that are here, this is a public hearing, so it'll be just like a, you know, it's only a hearing where we, you know, we'll take on any public comment or any questions. I'll open it up here in just a minute to the commissioners. If you all have, you know, questions, concerns, or whatever, we can hopefully address those. But I'll ask, I guess first, is there anyone here that would like to say anything or testify or have any questions before we move into the commissioners? Okay. We'll open it up now for commissioners. If you all have any questions for Jim or for Amy or Brooke, either one, you know, we'll certainly, or the members that serve on the SRC Committee, you know, are available to hopefully answer, at least procedure questions and, you know, how we got here. So, Mr. Douglas?
Can you just share with us, Jim, how it works when, because I think I know, but, you know, just for the rest of us, how the process is when a developer or builder comes in with their plans, and where, when does a landscape plan come in effect?
Sure. Yeah. The landscape plan is usually submitted with the, at the same time as the construction plan's set. Backing up from that just a little bit, things like we see today, a preliminary subdivision plan or preliminary development plan, they'll, they'll accommodate the landscaping requirements. In other words, they have to make sure that they put in at least the width and dimension, and even sometimes the intent of what they, what their landscape plan is going to be, but they don't necessarily have to show what the plants are or talk about really quantities. We review it based on, is it generally going to meet the intent, especially for things like the buffer areas? That's the biggest deal, in case they need a variance waiver or whatever. But when they finally get everything approved and they're submitting construction plans is when they submit the actual landscape plan, that's reviewed and either commented or approved. And then they do the installation of the landscape plan during the construction phase, and before we release any either certificate of occupancy or give a certificate of completion on the whole project, among other things that get reviewed on the, on the site, is the landscape plan for compliance with the approved landscape plan.
So, as it comes to the commissioners, when it comes to landscaping, buffering, screening, it's only when the commissioners put a binding element or stipulation in for increasing or certain types of plants or whatever, when, like say, if we have testimony from the public that says, you know, "I want a bigger buffer zone," or "I want something different," that's where, the only time the commissioners would have input?
Yeah. Generally, the landscape plan is a staff review level, and like you were suggesting, that if during a hearing, a buffer area is either altered, either larger or smaller, that's discussed, and/or if somebody wanted something more specific. We had a commercial case where somebody was asking for a fence along with landscaping to provide a stronger buffer, and so you can, we can add binding elements if it's discussed during this phase of a, of a project development.
Now, I know that, and I'm asking this because it has a little concern of, on the stormwater management board that I'm on, a lot of discussion from outside has come in to ask about the green infrastructure area. So how does that approval process take place? I mean, if I was a developer and I come in after I've got all my approvals, and I go to Brooke with my landscaping plan, and I'm a general contractor or I'm a builder, do I just, you know, I put in the request that I know what I'm supposed to have, but is there any suggestions? Who else reviews those plans? Like, is she gonna, will Brooke go to the MS4 Coordinator and say, "Hey, you see anything in these plans that might suggest where we could do a green infrastructure that we could suggest to the developer?" Or is she just going to take the plans and stamp them and say, "That's it"?
Well, good question. I've got to sort out my answer for a second here. The landscape requirements, just like stormwater management and even sometimes signs, are typically considered from the very beginning of a, of a project development. They aren't necessarily at the tail end where now we finally go, "Well, let's sprinkle landscaping in here," especially when there are dimensional requirements on the plan, like a certain width of a landscape buffer. You know, it has to be in there, or else they, they're going to have plans that don't get approved, because ultimately, you've got to add them in later. When the design professionals are putting together that development plan, typically they try to make sure they consider all the regulations and requirements, whether it's green infrastructure, stormwater management, traditional methods, landscaping. And again, even early, sometimes they'll put a proposed sign on a plan, just so that it's already being reviewed, and no surprise, most development, when they get to the end, before they even purchase the land sometime, they want to have all their approvals in place, and then they close on the property. So again, it's a, it's a design process where they're bringing in all the component pieces. In terms of an opportunity for green infrastructure, sometimes it's initiated by the design professionals because, in some cases, they don't have enough room on their property for, let's say, traditional detention basins, so they're going to propose alternative methods for dealing with stormwater early on, because they know they have to detain their water somewhere, somehow.
You still didn't answer-
So, well, the part about whether the MS4 Coordinator gets to see it during the review of the engineering, the construction documents, is where everybody coordinates and has a conversation on the first floor downstairs regarding the particulars. And sometimes there's a little kind of give and take between a landscape requirement and a stormwater requirement, especially things like easements and all the other utility easements. So again, that's all kind of put in the whole design process of a, of a development.
Okay.
I'm not sure if there's still a missing question.
I just want to make sure there is from, from not just this board or this commission, but also from the other board, that when we have a neighborhood or somebody comes in and complains about the water runoff that was approved by this commission, that we didn't consider green infrastructure, we didn't consider enough stormwater buffering or detention basin or swells, so, you know, are we addressing that, or are we just going to stamp it by somebody saying, "Okay, they met the minimum requirements"? That's, that's the only reason why, is there a chain, a chain of events that goes on here?
What we've added regarding green infrastructure, and I only know a little bit about green infrastructure, I don't know enough. I'm not a landscape architect, I'm not an engineer, so I, I don't know enough to be more specific than what we have now. But we did add in planting requirements, that the ILA requirement could be waived if green infrastructure was implemented, and that, of course, is with the approval of the MS4 Coordinator, so, or the, and the county engineer. So if someone comes in with a landscape plan and they want to, want us to waive the ILA requirement, and they do submit their green infrastructure plan, I would give that to Scott for review. I would not, I would review it to make sure it fits in the landscape plan, but in order to make sure it is actually doing its purpose to reduce, reduce water runoff and so on, I would submit that to Scott for review, and I would not approve the landscape plan until that has been approved by Scott or the county engineer, whoever that may be.
That wouldn't be your decision to recommend to the developer, "Hey, instead of using the ILA, how about using a little bit of green infrastructure"?
Well, that, it's in our, it's in our standards now, what we're proposing.
I understand that, but I, you know, I could, we had a developer sitting right here, and if I talk to him, he's going to say, "You know what, I got so much time in a day. I drop off my paperwork, I come in, I communicate, I'm not going to sit there and go over what I can and cannot do," you know. So I guess my question would be, Mr. Harris, you represent my board, so I got, I got two other members that are going to ask me questions about this.
Yeah, well, let me jump in here too. You know, there's, usually we have a pre-AP conference with staff-
Right.
-and Scott is involved in those. So again, early in the design process, we're talking about all these elements, whether it's landscape requirements, whatever, including stormwater management. So very early in the design process, we're talking about whether or not they can handle stormwater through a traditional mechanism or something different. And I'll jump to like-
We do, but if I, if I may, stormwater is the last thing finished on a set of plans. It's always talked about, it's never implemented. I just had a fourth design review with a very reputable engineering firm. My TRC comments still haven't been addressed to stormwater. They've submitted four times construction drawings, and they still haven't been addressed. It's the last thing, always.
Well, but, but, but that's, I, yes, but that confuses this conversation, because I think what we're getting at is, when are these recommendations proposed? And they're proposed in the very, as far as I'm concerned, and I'll give you an example, the Walgreen, the Walmart in Crestwood, we had no requirement for green infrastructure, but there are bio swales and there are tree wells, that we, in the very beginning, said, "You really ought to consider doing this." And Walmart stepped up, their engineers stepped up, and made an attempt to handle it. So, yeah, the details of stormwater management are sometimes left till the end in terms of the calculations and everything, but they're always discussed even in a pre-AP meeting. Now, whether an engineering firm carries it out at the beginning of their process or at the end, that's up to how they're going to propose it, it makes it harder if they don't address it earlier. We would hope that they would-
It just drives the process on.
It drives the process on. So I think, if I'm hearing your-
I just want to, I know that the state's getting ready to change their MS4 permit requirements, and part of that is, is strong emphasis on the green infrastr, infrastructure. So, I, you know, if we're making these changes, everybody should be aware of what's coming down the pike to encourage our developers to implement these, and to follow, because if not, you know-
That, that's going to be rather hard in the direction the development of the county is going anyway. Typically, green infrastructure takes more area, takes more space. Smaller house, more impervious, smaller lots, more impervious area. That's the other way. So, you know, it, it would be very hard. We are encouraging them to use it. We can't mandate it at this point. I don't know what the new MS4 is going to say, but-
Alright, any-
We did ask Burger King, sorry. We did suggest, they were at, if you remember, they were at like 64%, and the requirement is 65% impervious surface. Instead of them going over and asking you for impervious surface wa, waiver, we suggested that they implement green infrastructure and add tree wells. So we do do that, and then as the commission, you know, if they're asking for an impervious surface waiver, you can add a condition of some kind, or ask them if they tried to implement any kind of green infrastructure before coming to you for the waiver.
Yeah, and we do have-
We do discuss.
Right. And we do have projects that have put in some components of green infrastructure. Are they the greatest effort? Not necessarily, but I mean, I, we can walk down 53, and, you know, the first one to come to is the liquor store where they put in pervious pavement, and like the Cub Bank where they did pervious pavement, rain gardens, rain barrels, and all kinds of stuff. So, so we historically have made an attempt to try to convince the development community to use green infrastructure early in the process. Now, whether they end up doing it or not, like Scott said, it's not mandated, but we've, we've got some successes with it already.
Bluegrass Ice Center, Crestwood was one of them.
Bluegrass Ice Center, I was trying to think of their name.
Yep. Quite a bit of things. So, any other questions for staff? Mr. Horton?
It popped into my mind here. At what point will the developer and so forth get this list of suggested or required trees and shrubs and so forth, when they apply, say, "Here, take this with you, and this is what you're going to choose from," or-
It will eventually be in here, in our subdivision, subdivision regulations and ordinance.
Okay, so it'll be in there, and you won't have to mess with it there, they need to know what, what all of it is, including this.
Correct. It'll be at the, so at the very end of that section.
Like, it's an appendix of-
Yeah, on page 13, it'll be added to this page.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you.
Appendix, it's right in that section.
It's in the section then, okay.
300, right, yeah.
Good, thank you.
So I don't have to go searching for it.
Alright, Ms. Smith?
I have a housekeeping question. This is, I should have asked this a long time ago, but when this is being done piecemeal, like we have to do it, after this is approved by all the bodies, should we then put this in our notebook? Is it effective as of the date that it's approved by all the bodies? And then that's incumbent on the applicant to go by these rules, even though they're not in the book per se?
Correct. Well, they are, they are in the book, and there are, we have an electronic link to the scattered-
You're doing it that way?
The scattered kind of-
I'm still a paper person. I love paper.
It's a little confusing till we get through all of it.
When you go to our homepage on the Planning and Development website, the first paragraph speaks of the last set of documents that were amended by, recommended by the Planning Commission to the legislative bodies, and there's a link, and you click on that, and it's everything that's in there. So we'll do the same thing on this, and now there will be a second paragraph that says, "On this date, these following areas were recommended for changes or approvals," or whatever, and we'll have a link to that ordinance for that. So once we get through of what we're doing, then we'll incorporate it all into a new book. Everyone will get new books, and it'll be a complete comprehensive document.
But I had meant to ask, because somebody applied several months back, and there was a discussion about, they used the, they used rules that-
Yeah, it was the difference of uses in R2 and R2A or something of that nature. Right, Gary Baxter.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
No, it's alright. Any other questions?
I was going to try to get somebody else to ask. I couldn't get any. What happened to the City of La Grange section? Did you pick it up?
City of La Grange section?
Landscape reg-
The only difference that they have is a five-foot versus, so, and everywhere else in Oldham County, a vehicular use area buffer, so the buffer between the parking lot and the property line, in the street typically. In La Grange, it's five feet, or has been in the past, and then in Oldham County, it's 10 feet. I don't think that's been changed.
And all of the legislative bodies have the, have that option. They can, you know, the fiscal court can make changes, City of La Grange, we hope in the end that all four agree-
It's still there.
-that they all have the same, you know, language in all four documents, but they don't have to. You know, that's, it's, it's an ordinance, so they can, they can make changes even after our recommendations.
That was the only differentiation between La Grange and everywhere else. You may be thinking of sign regulations, they have a different sign ordinance.
Suggested tree species for the City of La Grange.
That's the first I've heard of.
Or landscaping. How long, how long do you all-
Oh, are you talking about that were prohibited and-
While they're looking at that, I just wanted to, I missed mentioning Greg King. He was not here today, but he's also serves on the SO, on the SRC Committee as vice chair, and I serve as chair of the committee, so I didn't mention his name because he wasn't, wasn't here today, and I missed him, so.
There's a section that's, it's 30180, I think. They have the old-
But it's the same.
Yeah.
I don't know what's the same, but I mean, I asked you something, you were the [inaudible]. It has deciduous trees, so we still use that for the deciduous tree. I think it might just-
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on the landscaping regulation proposal? Ordinance, yes sir, Mr. Klingenfus? Ordinance, yes, sir, Mr. Klingefus.
Code, code enforcement, on the last page, um, that's gonna affect, that affects all existing developments, is that right? Like-
Well, the regulation is only gonna apply to developments that have, have not been proposed yet, once this, until it's passed, but we do code enforcement in terms of looking at previously approved landscape plans, and whether or not they've been installed and maintained. So, if somebody is not, if the plants have died and they haven't replaced them, we can take them to code enforcement regardless. It's not spelled out in that section, but we can still do code enforcement for violation of the ordinance.
Okay, say a development got done 10 years ago and had a landscape plan, but trees have died, they'll be replacing those?
Yes, that's number four.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any additional questions? Okay, seeing none, uh, I asked Mr. Urban if he would outline what we need to consider here as far as a, a motion, and, and, you know, on this update.
Well, just a, a motion to recommend to the legislative bodies that we adopt these landscape regulations that have been brought up from the Study Review Committee through the Planning Commission.
Okay. All right, you've heard the recommendation, or what is the pleasure of the Chair would now entertain a motion on the zoning ordinance update recommendations to both fiscal court and the three cities, Peewee, LaGrange, and Crestwood, for their consideration of the landscaping regulations, Division 300. What's the pleasure of the Commission? Mr. Klingefus.
I move that we recommend these changes to the-
Legislative bodies?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion to approve these zoning, zoning ordinance updates on Division 300 landscaping regulations to the legislative bodies. Do we have a second? Okay, got a second? Uh, okay, oh, Kevin, all right, that'd be fine, and, uh, is there any more discussion, or any further discussion on the motion to approve? Ms. Smith?
When you all were discussing regulations for the city of LaGrange, I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
Will you-
Well-
There's not separate landscape regulations for the city of LaGrange.
I wondered about that.
There's, the only difference is, there's a five-foot buffer required in the city of LaGrange versus a 10-foot for the rest of Oldham County. He was talking, Mr. Douglas was talking about, um, in the prohibited and approved plant list, there's a mention of city of LaGrange trees, but there's, there's not a separate table that shows that those are separate, different from what Oldham County, so I think maybe there was a typo, or they had planned to put different trees in there at some point, and just didn't get to it, but that's gone away.
Just wanted to clarify before I vote on something.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion on the motion to approve? Okay, seeing none, oh, sorry, Mr. Douglas?
On the code enforcement, back to Mr. Klingefus, uh, on number four, landscaping that has never been installed, been removed, damaged, or diseased, is that just, I guess, a clarification on that, is that just for, like, say, if there's a development that's been done, just like Mr. Klingefus said, after 10 years, who goes back and replaces those?
Well, it should be the property owner or the original app, well, the applicant, but, but that may not be the same person any longer, so it, all of these get transferred, if, if the property gets sold, then it's the-
So, we're gonna have code enforcement go out and tell somebody when to plant a tree?
If, if they have not maintained-
Do we do that now?
Sort of, I mean, we don't go, we don't go look at every old landscape plan, and I know as an example, there's, I'm sorry?
We've had some, for example, some complaints about Oldham Oaks, I know, since Mr. Edwards developed that property, it's since been transferred, so he would no longer be liable to go in and replace the trees that have died, it's whoever the new owner is of that comp, apartment complex. I'll go back and look at the approved landscape plan, if there's, if he doesn't have whoever the, the property owner is, if they don't have those same trees planted, or if they've died, or are in disrepair, we can send them a notice of violation and ask them to replace those. It starts out with a courtesy letter typically. If it's not installed, then, at that point, it becomes a notice violation, then they move on to the code enforcement board.
That all, it's a lot to keep up with.
Mr. Klingefus.
I was under impression that one-acre tracts weren't affected by this much, it was mostly the developments, they are?
Non-residential.
Non-res, all non-residential are, regardless of lot size. If, if it's something that falls, if it was developed after the landscape regulations were put in place?
So, what, um, okay.
Okay, any further questions on the motion to approve? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask Ms. Fox if she'll take the vote on the motion to approve the zoning ordinance update recommendations to the legislative bodies of Division 300 and landscaping regulations. There's a motion to approve.
Mr. Klingefus?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Halfland?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Ah, yes, didn't hear that.
I trailed out there.
I didn't hear a light voice in the distance.
Yeah, late afternoon, a little bit. Okay, all right, the motion to approve the recommendation of a zoning ordinance update on landscaping regulations has been approved on a vote of 11 to 0. And, uh, Mr. Urban has informed me that we can vote on the next one on voice vote, so-
Yes.
We will do that, and, okay, Ms. Alvey, uh, school capacity standards, Division 270-50.
Okay, so, school capacity, um, standards, this is part of the capacity, um, ordinance and everything, we have been working on this for several months, uh, staff has been working with Michael Williams, with the Oldham County Board of Education, on this, um, so, we'll start and go through it as, as it reads, um, but the purpose, nothing was changed in Part 1. Part 2 says, um, previously, it said, as a part of consideration of any request to rezone property. So, this made it an implication in that if you had a subdivision, and it was zone R2, and you wanted to put 400 lots on it, it was not subject to school capacity, because it was not part of rezoning. So, we said, any requ, as part of the consideration to subdivide land, um, correct, yeah, available public school capacity shall be considered. So, we took out that it wasn't part of just one property was to be rezoned, I have glasses on, and I still can't see, okay. And then, we just changed some grammatical in there, instead of Oldham County School Board, we put Oldham County Board of, Board of Education, so you'll see that multiple times, um, red line through there. Then, number four, it talks about the students generated, um, Mr. Williams comes in every year normally, in December, January, February, and then, that's where he has done the projections, and we get the average number of students per building permit, and that, what we put on here, that's just kind of been, it says periodically, but we've done that annually, so, uh, we just kind of updated the language there that said, the form and method of arriving at the figures, data, and other information relating to students generated per dwelling shall be annually reviewed for accuracy and relevancy at, at a planning commission meeting by the end of each calendar year. So, we'll do it at the end of each calendar year, he's gotten his student populations for each, um, school and education level and everything, and Michael's Rain Man when it comes to numbers, so he'll have that information ready for us by the end of the year. So, um, we wanted to put it in here so that it would be done at, at the end of each calendar year. So, that is Part 4. Part 5, this is where you will see the biggest change. Previously, um, under mitigation, um, it, it talks about A, B, and C, those all were there, D, the word was just phasing, we didn't have any teeth into the language of what does phasing mean, how does phasing work? So, again, staff worked with Board of Education on the process of coming up with some type of mechanism to allow development to still continue, but on a paced base or growth-based, um, off of what the school could absorb, um, for students per year and building permits. So, under phasing, um, it just says, Oldham County Board of Education has adopted the campus capacity worksheet, which is a chart that averages the combined school capacity of the serving campus, campus being the elementary, middle, and high school serving that development, and applies a multiplier to calculate the number of building permits allowed per calendar year for the proposed development. And then, this is kind of the same generic paragraph from the previous one, where we get the number of students per building permit, this is the same paragraph, but, um, detailed for this part of, um, phasing, it says, the form and method of arriving at the figures, data, and other information relating to the campus capacity worksheet shall be annually reviewed for accuracy and relevancy at a planning commission meeting by the end of each calendar year. As part of this review, the Commission may request from the Oldham County Board of Education its raw data and formula used to determine the multiplier. The Commission, through its staff, may review this information to determine its accuracy, fairness, and comprehensiveness, as well as review for other pertinent factors. These are three key factors, the number of building permits, um, permits allowed are cumulative on an annual basis per calendar year. So, previously, if a development came in, and they were allotted 40 building permits, they came in in 2017, we would have in the binding elements, in 2017, they got 40, 2018, they got 40. So, this is now based off of, um, we, we have changed it in one other area, under the subdivision regulations portions, which we'll get to later, is that there are only, you only get the number of building permits once you go to record plot, not at the time of planning commission approval. So, they can't bank all of these years of, um, building permits, because they've never even gone to record, they haven't submitted their construction, it may be two years, two and a half years, and they've already got 80 permits, building permits on the table, ready to use. So, that's not really smart planning on our part, to allow that just to kind of pile up. So, with this mitigation, we will allow them to accumulate on an annual basis, annual basis per calendar year. So, if, um, once we get to the chart, if someone is allotted 20 building permits, and they go to record in August of 2017, they'll get 20 building permits. If they only use 10 of those, the other 10 carry over to the next year, so they can accumulate from year to year. So, in 2018, they get their 20, plus the 10 that they did not use. So, we're allowing them to accumulate per calendar year, but again, it'll be based off of what the capacity of the campus is, and I know this is a lot for those that weren't on Study Review to absorb, but, um, the applicant can petition the Planning Commission for revision of the binding element if additional capacity becomes available. If a development comes in, and they are at 120% capacity at that campus, and say, um, we'll just go on and turn it over, so, at 120%, they can have fif, they'll get 15 building permits per calendar, per calendar year. The Board of Education does a redistricting, or they open another school, and, or they add an addition on to a school, and the capacity changes for that campus, for that development, and the campus goes down to 101%. So, the developer can come back to the Planning Commission and petition them to allow them to go from 15 building permits per year to 32, because the factors have changed, there's a new school, they've, an addition, there's been redistricting, something of that nature, if they feel it is beneficial for their development. So, there won't always be tied to the number that the Planning Commission puts on as a binding element, um, it can change based on the factors of, of the, um, campus capacity changing, like, again, additions, redistricting, new schools. So, that, that is, that is the main change that we've talked about, um, with phasing on there. So, this is a campus capacity worksheet. So, if you look at this, and again, um, Michael worked diligently on this information, so, on, we have single-family on one column, and then apartments or multifamily, um, in the other column. We had a recent case, um, where there was some cap, school capacity issues for development, that was for multifamily. That school campus was at capacity, um, so we were trying to figure out, well, do multifamily developments, do we get the same number of kids? You would think you'd get less kids from apartment complexes or multifamily than you would from single-family, and you don't. You actually get more from apartments than you do single-family. So, and that's based off of, we have a list of apartment complexes, Michael knows where those kids come from, where they live, what, where they come, so he can equate that to the number of units, to the number of students. So, that's how, that's how we came up with the differences there. But again, a development comes in, and they go to the Board of Education for their Board of Education letter, and, and Michael does the numbers, and they're at 110% as an example, they would be allotted 23 building permits per year, based off of the average capacity of the three serving schools, the elementary, the middle, and the high school.
Those are cumulative.
And they are cumulative, correct, from, per calendar year. So, um, somebody left their glasses, um, so, Michael can give you the information on how he came up with those numbers, and the multiplier on how that was done, and how this fits into their capacity planning as well.
Michael, if you would.
Okay, where to start would be the better, this has been the brainchild, brain trust for what, the last six months, more than that?
Michael, for the benefit of those that have never seen this, start with how you even, a quick tutorial on how you come up with the school capacity numbers, you know, student population-
Okay.
-algorithm, start, start with that, because that, if you don't, then that piece is missing for, for the general public.
Okay, for the general public's consumption, how we determine capacity at a school, there are state standards issued by Kentucky Department of Education that create, based on the number of rooms we have, available space we have in a building, determine the number of students that can adequately fit in that building. Those numbers actually have been changed in the last year, and if you've seen any of our capacity letters, you notice that some of the schools went down in capacity, some of the schools went up in capacity. So, that's where we really start with all of this, is, is those, that number basically issued by the, by the schools, or by the KDE. From there, you look at the number of students we have in that given boundary area, that gives me my general, um, percentage of enrollment, or percentage of capacity. In all of that, every year, for, for the new commissioners, we do, um, growth projections for the last, and, and I will again credit Dr. Urban, uh, for his astuteness in that creation, I have made minor tweaks since I have inherited it, but on average, in the last 10 years, the averages, it's been, been about nine, between 98.2 and 99.6% accurate every year. The lowest it was, was the year that the bottom fell out of the economy, and I think it was 96.8% accurate, every year. So, I roughly know and can tell how many kids, now, I can't do it as specifically on a school basis, I can tell you district-wide, this is how many kids I expect us to have. Uh, this year, we were at 99.82% accurate. So, again, it, it, it holds very true, and so, we use that in our capacity letters. So, all of this came about, and, and we started talking, and looking at a, at a way that, as growth is coming back to the county, we can't get in the same shape that we were in before we started capacity planning, where we were growing 600 students plus a year, and couldn't keep up. And, and that's one of the nice things, and if you ask, you know, Mr. Schultz, our superintendent- And, and that's one of the nice things, and if you ask, you know, Mr. Schultz, our superintendent, he loves the fact that we have a, at least a voice in this conversation. Most districts don't. And so working through this, we have come to this point of, we started to look at, okay, how do we get to a point of numbers that we can manage bringing into our buildings, but that still would not prohibit all growth in the county? And so this has gone through, what, five or six different configurations? I mean, even just for SRC, it's gone through three, I think. Before that, it was, I was looking at fourteen different variables, trying to hone it down into a list, and, and could never get it to consistently hold the numbers that I felt like we weren't shutting down growth in the county. So we got it to this point, and basically, when you look at it, and you start at 95% of capacity on that campus. We don't have a single campus right now that's sitting at 95% of capacity, obviously. But we have some that you saw today that was 103, I think, 103-point-something. And I'm going to round those numbers to the closest whole number. I'm not going to try to break it even farther out. So you'll look at, where does that fall in that scale? Well, during the conversations, you know, I had it starting at one point, and when we talked to, with the builders at SRC, it became, okay, well, we can live with thirty-five because the average number of permits that any subdivision was granted in a year was, what, thirty-three, thirty-something at Brentwood? I think it was Brentwood, for that year. So, you know, we start, we put that as the starting point, because that's, that seemed to be a consensus among the builders that said, you know, we can do, we can, you know, do that many building permits. And then we took the multiplier, and I looked at the multiplier, and I said, okay, how do I go to a point of, and then establish, we had it going all the way to zero. But again, that, that would shut off growth in the county. And so the recommendation from the builders and, and members at SRC were, take it to fifteen. And so looked at it on both charts, how do you go from thirty-five to fifteen? Well, based on the numbers and, and how you see the capacities increase, when you get, you see from ninety-five to a hundred, well, ninety-five to ninety-nine, it only goes down by a hundredth each time. And then it, as it, as the capacity increases in that campus, we start to slow it down a little bit more. Each year, we're going to look at those numbers. These numbers will come back to you, just like I bring the number of building permits, students per building permit number each year. We're going to look at these numbers each year. My guess is they'll hold pretty consistent from year to year. I don't know that as a fact, but, you know, we'll get to that point once we start to review it each year. But we did have to look at, how do we slow it down? And, and looking at the multipliers, as that capacity increased, how do we have to slow it down to give us time to develop the capacity that we need? And so that's where those numbers really worked out from. Does that answer your question in a very long-winded way?
Yep. And I'd say, you know, you're looking at, at basically managed growth. I mean, you know, how, how do we manage growth in Oldham County to where, you know, the schools can keep up and, and not get where we were back in, you know, ten years ago or whatever?
Right.
Back, so, okay. All right, let me, let me open it up before we get questions or whatever from the commissioners. Let me open it up. Is there anyone here that has questions or wants to start or anything that you'd like to add? Okay. All right, commissioners, Mr., well, let me get Mr. Klingefus, and then.
How much does school capacity?
Is your mic on?
How, how bad does school capacity have to get before you can build a school by state?
Well, there's multiple factors that are going to play into that. One, every elementary school, every school, if we, we're considering building a new school, every school in that age cluster, so if we're talking about building a new elementary school, every elementary school has to be at a minimum of 85% capacity. Right now, we're not there with all of our elementary schools. I'm not going to publicly hint at this, but you understand where I'm going with that. Eventually, we will need to level and balance those enrollments. So that's already a conversation that started internally for us.
So you, it, with schools at 85% capacity, you can build another one?
If we see and can justify the growth to the state, to, to KDE, we can, at, at every school being at a minimum of 85% capacity, if we can say, yes, we know this growth is coming, they will give us the green light to start the planning process for a school. Now, so that you also understand, it's basically a three-year process for us to put a school in the ground. You have a year of planning and two years of construction. So.
Okay. And what point do you look at moving kids around? You know, as far as, what kind of, do you have a number, you get a 130%? Do you, you know, look at?
There is not a great number, and it's hard for us, elementary schools are different. So we have to look at all three levels differently when we talk about redistricting or balancing enrollments. Elementary schools is a self-contained unit in and of themselves. Those students, other than the related arts, don't really leave that classroom on a regular basis. So the more kids you have to push into that school, you're going to create an issue at each of those grade levels. So we're going to look at that probably sooner than we would look at a middle school or a high school where you have the, the ability of moving students from classroom to classroom. It's also not optimal at the middle school and high school level, but you can have what they call teachers on a cart. And you can use an available classroom, Mr. Williams is shaking his head, yes, I think he remembers the days that South Oldham High School were teachers on a cart. You know, that a teacher can go from room to room and teach in a different room and still utilize that space and not have an empty classroom at any given time. I will say this, and you look at the numbers, and you all know the numbers, South High is at 137% of capacity? They don't have, they may have two or three teachers that teach on a cart. There are still open rooms. Because of the way those schedule structures work, there are still open spaces in that building. So we understand, it may not be at the high school level that we have to go, okay, at 137% of capacity, we need to redistrict. Because if you look at the boundary lines, to push kids to North High, you're going to the doorsteps of the other two schools to balance those enrollments. You know, the other factors that come into that, we have the Arvin Center, which takes some students away two periods a day. That increases, it doesn't increase the capacity at the school, but it minimizes the number of students in that building, building at any given time. We also, for the upper-level kids, for the seniors, a fair number of them either attend JCTC, U of L, Bellarmine, all of that, and so they're sometimes not even in the building at all on a given day.
All right, additional question. Mr. Douglas, do you have something?
You know, I've always wanted to know this, and since you're up here, I'm going to ask this.
Uh-oh.
Every time we have come across a school capacity here on the commission, and there is a binding element that there may be mitigating circumstances where we say only, like today, forty building permits could be issued in the first phase. How do you, I'm assuming for that school capacity, if it was at 103?
Correct.
Is forty building permits based on the number of students possibly rolling in that school, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Next month, we have another commission hearing for that same school. How do you know what the school capacity, if it's still forty again?
Historically, that's why we're looking at changing this. It's been, every time, it's forty.
Yeah.
Phasing is forty. And so, and, hold on.
I, I, the reason why I ask that is because I know that happened last year. We ended up approving some developments that was, the school capacity was like, we were supposed to be 25, 30, or whatever, and then like, two months later, we did the same thing. And I'm like, well, shouldn't we have deducted something somewhere?
Okay, in the old form, and I keep a running list of what's been approved, how many students we should get out of that. And so that you know, when that multiplier comes out, it's K-12. I can't project how many high school kids we're going to get out of a given subdivision, whatever. We have, and through all of this process, actually changed the form, so that you will actually see that number four is, would be something new on this form for you all. It will actually say, "Other approved developments in the campus area." So I included Heather Ridge at this point, which the net growth out of Heather Ridge, based on seventy, seventy-two homes, is twenty-three students. So that number then now comes down and plays into the final capacity number, that, that's the number, that 103.59, that's the number that I will use on this chart for the next subdivision.
And that wasn't done before?
It was, but it was done just in my office. It was never visually seen anywhere.
Okay, any additional questions? Mr. Klingefus.
Make sure I understand. So your capacity, did what we did today, that lowered the capacity on that, that school campus? If it goes through?
If it goes through. Okay, so what happened, and Mr. Klingefus, I use this as an example, because I used Heather Ridge in it, okay? So you look at, if you come across to the campus and you look at, okay, so here's the rated capacities and the planned capacity. Here's the number enrolled, okay, and then their projected enrollment for the next year, okay, which only puts them at 102.79. But then I add in those twenty-three students that are potentially coming from Heather Ridge, puts them up to 3,003 students. So that 3,003 with the 28, 99 gets me the 103. And so if, let's say, we have another subdivision come that's going to be in the Buckner, Oldham Middle, Oldham High campus, until Heather Ridge is built out, you will see Heather Ridge, and then you will see the common, what, thank you, Commons of Cedar Point listed on there with the number of students that I expect out of that development.
This, the twenty-three, those are the phased ones each year?
That is the total.
For the whole?
For seventy-two, that's the total. For seventy-two?
Remind him of that every year, tell us that.
Okay, so when I come each year and I give you that, my little handy-dandy chart, and down at the bottom, I say, the number we're recommending is the, this year is .326. Okay? When I have a new subdivision, I take that .326 and multiply it by the number of houses. That .326 for Heather Ridge netted me twenty-three students, K-12. Okay? Here, the 102 in the Commons at Cedar Point nets me 33 students.
Okay.
So I have that running chart in my office, and now, like I said, you all will now see it in the capacity letter that says, okay, Heather Ridge has been approved, the Commons at Cedar Point has been technically approved, those numbers need to start to decrease our capacity in that campus area.
And those students are spread out through all twelve grades?
K-12.
Because you don't know exactly where they're going to be till they enroll.
Correct.
How long were those num, if, what happens in the case where a development quits? What, how do you determine when that, are those numbers taken back off ever on some developments?
I have never taken a number back off.
Well, you may have, like Buckner Crossing had 500 houses.
Right, but I.
But it expired.
It expired. I, I guess technically, yes. If it officially expires, then yes, I would remove those numbers. Like, I, I haven't counted, and I know it's coming, but Summit Park, I knew it died, and I hadn't included those numbers in that boundary area, but I don't think we've actually had one in that boundary area, because that's a, I'm trying to think, I think locust, Oldham Middle, Oldham High boundary area.
Well, the one we did today has been through a couple times, and so along, somebody could pick it up and continue that development, you kept those numbers on the books?
Correct.
Mr. Douglas, before you, I get to you, I want, is there anybody else that have questions? Want to be fair to everybody, you know, here, so, okay.
Mine was just short. Is this like, that document, internal document, just for Board of Education, or does the principals see that too?
They get that number each year.
Each year?
Yeah.
So I noticed it seemed like every time you present one of those, that high school mark, especially for like, Oldham County High School, is pretty high?
South High is actually higher.
Is it?
The state, South High's original capacity was listed at, I think, 1,050?
1,053.
Thank you, 1,053. The state reassessed the school and lowered it to 1,019 students as their capacity. So that literally pushed their capa, their, their building capacity percentage up to 137%. So that will be the highest school you will see. I will also tell you that, that down the road, it's been put into our facility plan that South High will get a major renovation. What that looks like at this point, I don't know. I'm not on, on that side of that world. I'm on the, here, how many kids can you account for side of the world. And so that will change it. And once the building, once, and now I forgot the name of it, what the state issues to us that basically?
Talking about the LPC and the?
No, the VG1.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so once we get what's called a VG1 from KDE, we actually will start to increase that. Already, go ahead and list that added capacity, because we know that construction's coming.
All right, any other questions before we move on here? Mr. Klingefus?
A lot of questions. The developer can keep accumulating those, the school, you know, the right to build us, the building, the houses?
Each year, it accumulates each year. So like Amy said, if they came and went to record plat in August, and I don't, is it calendar year, or is it calendar year from date of issue?
Calendar.
Okay, so in January, let's say, let's say they got twenty in August, they used ten. January one, they get another twenty. So they'd have thirty for the year 2018.
And that's, that's only at record plat, which means that they've gone to construction plans. It's not just sitting out there and doing extensions of exploration.
They've got some notes built?
That it's gone to construction, correct. Lots, it's gone to record, lots are ready to be sold.
Okay, I had a concern that somebody could do this and sell the right to build 200 houses.
Mm-hmm.
Right, no, it's at record plat.
My other concern is with 35 houses a year of, in, in one campus area versus 15 in another one, if you had a development that had 300 houses in it, and it 15 a year, 15 houses a year, it's 20 years to build it out, versus the other one, you're looking at about eight years to build out. So when you go with a campus plan like this, this plan will decide where development occurs in the county.
But we've always used the campus number. We've never used an individual school number.
But it's always been forty. It didn't, it's kind of mute until you start actually enforcing it.
But again, they can also, as we change, as capacities change in our buildings, they can come back and say, can we now have, they can come back to you all and ask, can we now, you know, the school capacity is now this, can we have that nu, that new number?
I'm not in a big hurry to build a lot of houses. I don't want to, the 35 is plenty high, it could have been lower than mine.
Well, we haven't really talked about that. We had a great discussion about forty, 35, and 30, and Michael had gone through this chart with all of those numbers. And the SRC, I think it took two or three meetings of discussing what number, and so we weren't random, what number, and then what the minimum was that would be, that would work. So I mean, this, this was heavily discussed among the development community, elected officials, SRC members, research, to, to come up with a fair and balanced number. And it was reduced by five to start with. And then a floor was created, this 15. And then a floor was created, this fifteen saying, okay, that's the, that's the minimum number you'll get. And then again, we had already moved towards at record plat, so we're kind of refining this whole process.
All right, anything else? Oh, okay. Any other questions? Okay. At this point, I guess we're down to consider a motion like we did the last time on the school capacity, recommendation to legislative bodies. The chair would entertain a motion at this point. Mr. McWilliams?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I move that we approve a recommendation to the county's legislative bodies on all of the changes that were presented to us today of section two seven zero dash zero five zero.
Okay, is that an adequate motion, sir?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, have a second. Okay, Mr. Halfland, seconds. Any discussion now on the motion to recommend to the legislative bodies approval of the revised zoning ordinance on division two seventy zero five zero, school capacity standards? Any discussion? All right, I think we will do a voice vote on this one. All those in favor of, of the recommendation to the legislative bodies on the subdivision, our school capacity standards signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
Okay, those have been approved. All right, last thing that we have today for consideration is the subdivision regulations.
Now, there's one more after that.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Article three subdivision considerations process. Ms. Alvey?
Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. So this talks about the process of going through developing a subdivision or even just cutting off or dividing, doing a simple, a simple minor plat. The first one, just with some grammatical changes there in the first paragraph, and then we changed the division and action required. We changed those a little bit on there, but it just talks about the different types of divisions. Easement plats, that's adding or removal of any type of easements, and then it tells what steps that they have to follow in order to go get through that process, which is one and six. Then minor amendments, minor plats, and consolidation plats, those are approved at staff level and those are steps one, five, and six. There's been no change to that, that's what we currently practice now. And then the last one is major plats, which would be that of a subdivision plat that requires commission approval, and so they would go through the, all of the steps on there. This section will relate back to our extension of expiration policy, which is our last item, which is an internal policy of the Planning Commission. It's not incorporated into the zoning ordinance, so we'll do that one last. But previously, it said all final plats shall be submitted for review and approval within three years of the preliminary plat approval. So that means that because we phase, we do phasing, if, an example, as Bobby said, that if there's a three hundred lot subdivision and you're only allowed forty per year, how can you, how can you submit all of your final plats within three years? So that didn't work with the arrangement of doing phasing. Then up here, it says when requested, one-year extension of approval may be granted by the commission. In granting extensions, the commission shall have the right to require amendments to the approved preliminary plan when it finds that applicable ordinances and regulation, land use plans, local land uses, or development conditions have changed since the approval. That was originally below, in another paragraph, that's the same language, it was just moved up, so that's just a relocation. And then it says approved final plat shall be recorded within six months. I'm not sure, since I came to planning and zoning seven years ago, our stamp that was always used said expires in one year. So we were stamping them, telling them that they had to file their record plat in the clerk's office or their plats within one year when the reg said six months. That's not really been an issue, so we just changed it to the one year to match what we've, the previous practice had been.
And it, and it always had been one year, as long as I can remember, but...
So I'm not sure that, that was something on there, so. And again, then if you look, that, this paragraph that was highlighted here or struck through, that was the paragraph that was implemented in the, in the above one. Under postponement, it says the commission or its designee may postpone its decision pending further study of a plat. And then it goes on and it says, but in no event shall its decision be postponed more than ninety days from the date of filing at any step in the process as outlined herein. Without the consent of the developer, the developer can request postponement beyond ninety days. Postponements are really regulated through KRS one hundred, when the Planning Commission has, is required to make a decision within ninety days from the application date. So that really doesn't need to be put in there, that's all outlined and regulated through KRS one hundred, so. On amendment and revocation, we just put amendment before revocation, and it's, this is where it says a plat previously approved may be amended by action equivalent to that which approved the original plat if additional lots are being created or roadway created or eliminated. If no roadways are being created or eliminated and no, and no additional lots being created, then the amendment shall be treated like a minor plat or consolidation plat at the discretion of the administrator or be referred to the commission. So if a development comes in, they're not adding any new roads, they're not adding any new lots, they're really just rearranging the existing lots or due to road alignments, that can be reviewed and approved by the administrator, or if Jim's not comfortable or the administrator's not comfortable doing it, they can refer that to the commission. So we added that or be referred to the commission because a lot, we've had that happen in the past, says, well, the reg says that you can do it. And so sometimes it's, we like to have full transparency in the office and, you know, for everyone in the public, say, well, that's not really what, that's not how I remembered it, or if they have something from a neighborhood meeting or our meetings, and then it's built differently, and they're like, well, how come? So that gives Jim the, the ability to refer it to the commission, so it, for, for full transparency. So in step three point three, pre-op meeting, nothing was changed there. Under pre-p preliminary plat, at this stage, the second paragraph there, it says at this stage, a meeting with identified neighbors is required to facilitate the identification of potential resolutions of community concerns for all subdivision plans. Originally, we, the neighborhood meetings are only required, or we only required them previously for zoning map amendments, but we feel it's good that even if the property is zoned appropriately, that the joint property owners are notified by the developer so they have an opportunity to work out any kinks before they get to us and the public forum. So that's why we added in here for all subdivision plans, so any subdivision, any plan that will be developed into a subdivision will now be required to have a neighborhood meeting. The subdivider will need to provide the commission staff with a list of first-tier adjoining property owners. It says second-tier property owners, those adjoining the first tier within five hundred feet are to be notified only if the plan is part of a zoning map amendment request. Certification that each property owner listed notified of the meeting to discuss development is also required. So this just clarifies that second-tier property owners are only notified when it is part of a zoning map amendment. So that was a little confusing to some because when they read it, they thought, well, we're not doing that, a zoning map amendment, just first tier, second tier, so we tried to clarify that as much as possible. Down on step three, this talks about a subdivider wishing divine land in Oldham County and required to submit a preliminary plat shall do so only in accordance with the substantive procedural requirements contained in these regulations. The commission shall hold a public hearing as part of its consideration, consideration of any major preliminary plat, which would basically be a subdivision plat. Any plat that involves a request for waivers or deviations from substantive requirements of these regulations or that proposes developments of an environmentally sensitive area as defined herein is required to have a public hearing. So basically, any plat that comes through our office that would require any variances or waivers would require that process. That does not allow staff to, to grant variances or waivers, so, or just spelling that out. And then any minor plat complying with the substantive requirements of the regulations as determined by the commission staff shall not require the holding of a public hearing. So if it's a minor plat and someone's carving off an acre to, for their child to build a house on it, it meets all of the requirements, that is reviewed and approved at staff level, and that is, that is the current practice today. Step four talks about construction plans on here, and it just talks, this was part of the review that we were, had discussions with the county engineer on, on construction plans. It says upon approval of a preliminary plat and prior to construction of any physical improvements to the subject property, a subdivider must submit a soil and erosion control plan simultaneously with the construction plans as required by local, state, and federal agencies, providing technical data concerning the location, type, and quantity of specified physical improvements and/or infrastructure. Construction plans are to be reviewed and approved by the county engineer. The soil and erosion plan must be in place before any work, earthwork may begin and shall comply with all Oldham County ordinances. So again, sorry, that was off the screen. That was reviewed and discussed, and I worked with Scott specifically on that section when it came to soil and erosion and what that process would be. And then step five, again, this is the one where it talks about preparation, submission of final plat. We just removed that whole par, or section of the paragraph that says that the final, requisite final or record plat conforming to the approved preliminary plat is not submitted for review and approval whether in total or in phases within three years of the date of approval of the preliminary plat, then the preliminary plat is considered void. So that's basically saying from the time that you guys approve it, they have to go to record with the entire development within three years. Well, that's impossible to do if anybody, right now, if anybody has more than, what would that be, thirty, sixteen, ninety, thirty, sixteen, ninety, one hundred and five lots? Because if, if they were, could get the max number of lots of thirty-five per year, this is saying that once they go to record, they would have to build out, go to record within three years of your all's approval, which is nearly impossible to do, obviously, with, with our phasing plan. So we just removed that portion from it because that defeats the purpose. And again, the recording of the plat, we just changed that again. Any plat not recorded within one year after receiving all necessary approval shall be deemed null void and have no effect. So we took out the six months, moved it back to one year. And that's all I have on that.
We have questions on the question, is there anyone here? Or, 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 or,[1646.97]
Because it, it's one of those things, is how long you let somebody just keep extending, 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 extending without, because a lot of things can change. And that's why we asked for the Oldham County Traffic Consultant, because that will determine, they'll go back out and look at what the anticipated trips are, because you could have a vacant piece of property that's been, that's had 10 years of extension requests while you have three subdivisions now down the street from it that have all developed. Well, that may change now what those traffic concerns are on the road, because, you know, it's just been sitting there idle and not doing anything. So, so we were trying to figure out what would be a trigger for the review process, and we've determined that it would be, the best would be traffic, the traffic counts and under that section 390-040. If the plan has expired, then the plan shall be reviewed by the Oldham County Traffic Consultant to determine the review category as outlined in section 390-040 of the Oldham County Comprehensive zoning plan. So basically, this extension of expiration policy update is saying that it limits the number of extensions, extension of expiration requests that can be reviewed and approved at staff level at four. There was no cap previously. So we're capping it at four, and then after four, they have to go to section 390-040 and follow that procedure that's already in place.
All right. Commissions, regarding the extension of expiration policy request, can I ask, is there any comments? Seeing none? Any questions? Questions? Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Was it your hand?
Yes, sir, Mr. Reynolds.
Just one quick question, Amy. Is there, is there any point, or whomever, is there any point at which a developer exercises all of the extensions? I mean, we've done that now. I mean, we've, you're out of them, and they still have not gone to construction. Do we, do, what's, what's, what do we do then? We say you have to start it?
We're saying that you would be required to come back to the Planning Commission.
Start over.
Mm-hmm.
So that's our teeth in it. It's just, you've got to start all over again.
Well, and it would be part of that review process to ensure that traffic has not changed, water, school capacities, sewer infrastructure, sewer, all of that. A lot of that can change in 10 years.
Absolutely.
If you just keep extending, extending, and then they're sitting here on the side.
Yeah.
And not having to be brought up to day standards.
Thank you.
We've got several examples in the county.
I know we do.
They're stretched way out there that are just sitting there that are still getting, you know, or getting extended.
So.
Or they face expiration.
Right.
And they just give up.
Oh, they, they would just give up.
They could.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Let's consider construction phase. Once.
Construction plans.
Yeah, they have to have approved construction plans into the county engineer's office, and once those are approved, then they can go to record plat and they post their bonds. That'll have to be done within six years now.
Okay. And let's say they done record, and they recorded it, they've done their construction, but they still haven't started, or they've semi-done construction, develop roads or cut out paths or whatever, for roads, but that's as far as they get. So what happens then? Does the clock still ticking on the sixth expiration? I mean, it's very easy, I guess, to take your construction plans, a developer, come in and get approval and say, we're going to do this, and send a bulldozer out, cut a path. You know where I'm going with this, because it.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I, I think it, all of that ends up costing them money if they're not going to move forward. They typically aren't doing that much. It's possible.
So how, how, does that, does that interfere with this at all? I mean, because technically, they're in construction phase, even though they haven't been out there in three years, or two years, or whatever. What happens? I mean, I can see this as.
He scratches our head and go, wow.
But you see what I'm saying? We're not protecting ourselves as far as the county.
It could happen, yeah.
We're just letting somebody just hang out there. And once while, we send code enforcement out and say, hey, soil erosion, settlement, silt fence is gone, you need to come prep it back up. What, we're not, this is good, but I don't think it's effective.
Yeah. We only have three projects now that are receiving extension of expiration, so I don't foresee that being an issue. And I guess we would have to address it at that point and bring that concern back to the Planning Commission on that specific project. But like I said, we only have three projects that are receiving extensions of expiration at this point, out of all of the subdivisions that have been built.
The ones that have, I know I'm not.
The ones that have started, is that considered under, still under construction?
No.
If they've started, they're kind of in the process.
Yeah.
Right. But it may never go into.
If they've only done section one of four sections of the development, they're, they don't have to keep extending for the other three sections.
Right. So if they've just gone in and bulldozed a couple.
Look like roads and never come back in three years, four years, or just, what, abandon the problem?
Well, then we have bonds. We should have bonds and stuff in place at that point that hopefully would cover any improvements that they did not complete.
Yeah, but in terms of their ability to move forward or not, that's, or expire or not, yeah, it's a, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to think of a, if we actually have a case like that, and I, I can't think of one.
Mr. Chairman?
I believe we had some that have dragged out, but.
Is it ever in the purview of the commission to say to someone who's had multiple extensions, who, you know, they're out, to say, okay, well, let's say somebody's in, they've got a four-phase development, they developed the first phase in six months and they haven't done anything for four years? Is it didn't, within the purview of the commission to say, okay, you now have six more months to develop section two, a year to develop section three? I've not ever, I wouldn't think so.
Once they get going, they're, they're, they're kind of, they have the ability to go at their pace.
Pace it themselves.
You know, like back during the recession we had 10 years ago, where everyone bottom dropped out of everything.
Yeah.
A lot of these developments just basically start frozen time. You know, they just quit, or they went out, you know, went, they went bankrupt, or the banks foreclosed on them, or whatever, and they just, just sat there. They continued to come in and get extensions, and in a lot of cases, you know, Billy Delco of the world, or somebody came in and picked up those, those properties and then moved those, you know, moved them forward. So, you know, that's happened several times, you know, but.
And, and part of that is because the capacity has already been considered by the utilities or agencies. So like the Board of Education, once they go to record, once they get construction plans, though, they're, they, Mike, we heard Michael say that he keeps that in as already occupied capacity. If they have to pay sewer taps, if they've had to make road improvements, you know, those, those have already been accounted for, so the next sections, even though they may have stalled, we're still considering that their infrastructure has been accounted for. No one suffers from that situation other than possibly the developer?
Yes. Yeah.
All right. Any further questions? All right. Seeing none, do we, the chair would entertain a motion on the extension of expiration policy recommendation, again, to the legislative bodies. We have a motion. I've been looking down here, but I'm going to look over this side. This side, this side.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we recommend to, and I'm assuming to the legislative body, the extension of the expiration policy that was outlined today, or is this necessarily need to be?
Not to the legislative.
Because this is for the commission, that's what I thought.
That was my fault.
So, a correction will be a motion to approve the extension of the expiration policy that's been drafted by staff and reviewed by us here today.
All right. That was my fault. So, oh, that'd be great. Okay. We've got a motion on the floor on this internal document to, on the extension of expiration policy, that it be approved as submitted. Any, oh, have a second. Do we have a second? Okay. Mr. Hampton, second. Any discussion now on the motion to approve the expiration of extension, or extension of expiration policies, sorry? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay. Motion carries. What do we have for next month, Ms. Alvey?
You will have a revised subdivision, or revised, yes, preliminary subdivision plan that will be on for next month, I know for sure. And then next month's meeting is on the 19th. So that is the third Tuesday, which is a fiscal court meeting, so we will have to be done by 2:00 p.m. So I'm not thinking of anything else that will be on the agenda for that day. But we had to move it due to the holiday, so.
Right. And so we, and we will not have SRC on Thursday night, correct? It's Thursday night?
This Thursday. No, sir. We will not. It is December the 11th at 5:00 p.m., which is a Monday.
All righty. Thank you all. We will stand adjourned.
When do you get that off, or when do you, when are you supposed to be functioning?